All right, thanks everybody for being here. We do have a quorum and for this meeting and Councilman Pepper is on the phone as well. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that. Hey, Mr. Pepper. All right, we'll start with approval of minutes. Any questions or changes on those? All right, set public hearings, resolution 22343, approve abatement of unsafe conditions at 303 11th Avenue Northwest, set public hearing to be held on January 3rd, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. All right, any questions? Resolution 22344, approve abatement of unsafe conditions at 2259 Graham Avenue Southwest, set public hearing to be held on January 3rd, 2023, 6:00 p.m. Any questions? Ordinance 224545, approve rezoning request 141022 for property located at 3307 Indian Hills Road Southeast from an R1, single-family residential district to a B2 general business district, set public hearing to be held on January 3rd, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. All right, any questions? All right, public hearings, ordinance 224539, approve zoning request 140922 for property located at 2319 Old Molton Road Southwest to be zoned M1A Commercial Expressway District. Public hearing was set November 7th, 2022. Any questions? All right, ordinance 224540, approve rezoning request 140822 for property located at 749 Danville Road Southwest to be rezoned from R2, single-family residential to B1 local shopping district, public hearing was set November 7th, 2022. Any questions? All right, any changes on we debatements? David? Any questions? All right, resolution 22, oh, sorry, moving to resolutions, resolution 22350, approve an amendment to the existing power supply contract between TVA and the City of Decatur to implement a new resale rate schedule for electrical, electric vehicle charging power rates. Any questions? Resolution 22351, approve an amendment to the existing power contract between TVA and the City of Decatur to provide an exception for Decatur utilities to sell electricity used exclusively for electric vehicle charging. Any questions? All right, resolution 22352, approve one-time pay increase for wellness participants.
No changes, and I responded to the question from last week, so if there are any other questions, let me know.
Okay, any questions? All right, resolution 22353, approve one-time holiday pay increase.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution 22354, approve sidewalk cafe for Tess's place. Any questions? Resolution 22355, authorize the mayor to sign the carrier commercial service HVAC maintenance plan agreement in addendum. Any questions? Resolution 22356, accept Saputo Dairy Foods donation for Cashin Wheeler Field.
No changes unless the council has said it.
Okay, any questions? All right, resolution 22357, approve City View software purchase for the community development, building, and revenue departments. All right, any questions? Resolution 22339, authorization to use the city parking lot behind Princess Theater located at 112 Second Avenue Northeast for an electric vehicle fast charging station.
No changes.
All right, any questions? Resolution 22358, approve FY23 resurfacing projects. Any questions? Resolution 22359, accept ascend donation to Police Department for Heroes and Helpers program.
This is a lay-in, this is for our shop, the Top Gear, with a helper program that we do every year, there are ones that have the donation.
Okay, any, any questions? Next chief. Ordinance 224543, quick claim deed to Timothy and Cynthia Matthews.
We request that that be removed, the people that asked for it, chosen to go another direction, we'll ask that be removed.
All right, we will remove that from the agenda. And ordinance 224544A, adopt medical cannabis ordinance.
There's no change since you all voted on it November the 28th.
Okay, any questions? And we voted on the, the change with.
That's right.
Distance for residential. Any other questions? Boards and committees, reappoint Delane Dean to the Board of Zoning Adjustment term expiring December 31st, '25.
No changes.
Any questions? That's her second term.
Second full time.
Appoint Mark McCurry to the Board of Zoning Adjustment term expiring December 31st, '23.
No changes.
Any questions? All right, we'll get started at 6 o'clock.
Get started at six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
We'll call the meeting to order. Herman Marks will lead us in our invocation and pledge.
Our Father, we are truly grateful to be here tonight. We thank you for the many blessings that you provide us in life. We want to focus now on the Christmas season and fellowship with family and friends. And may we never underestimate the importance of our ability to associate with others without concerns or fear. We ask now that you continue to bless us and bless us in this meeting. We ask this all in your name. Amen.
Amen. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Herman. Roll call. Here. 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 Here.
Here.
Here.
All right, just to clarify, I wanted everybody to know, we have a quorum here. We passed a resolution recently following state allows for sick to call and Mr. Pepper to do that, so just so everyone is aware. Approval of minutes. Want to take up public hearings next, and I'll explain in just a minute.
Move.
Have a motion on the approval of minutes by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? And this is for all three items. Roll call.
Aye. McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
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 Minutes are approved, five to zero. We do have a resident here that wants to speak on one of the public hearing items. So if everybody's okay with that, we'll move those in front of the set public hearings, and they have to leave soon. So is everybody okay with moving that up? Is that okay? All right, we'll go to, and it's B that we need to take up first. Ordinance 224540, approve rezoning request 140822 for property located at 749 Danville Road Southwest to be rezoned from R2, single-family residential, to B1, local shopping district. Public hearing was set November 7th, 2022.
Yes, this request is for a property there on Danville Road, 749 Danville Road Southwest, looking to go from R2, single-family, to B1, local shopping, and that was not recommended for approval by the planning commission.
All right, this is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing now. I have a few people that have signed up to speak, and I think there are some others as well. I'm just going to go down the list of who's signed up first, and first is Sheila Pertle. If you don't mind, just come to the podium, give your name and address. We're doing three minutes. And there we go.
I'm sorry, I really don't have anything to say except for what I've already said. What I want to do there, and the zoning on the funeral home and the cemetery is residential. And so that's why this is, one of the reasons why this has been so difficult. But anyway, so that's why I'm having to take the route that I'm taking because of that. All I have to say is...
Thank you, Ms. Pertle.
Ms. Pertle, what's your background in florist? Do you have a background in florist?
No, personally, my family does.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, I had you next on the list if you want to speak.
Rob Wilson, Caradale Street. Mine is not as much about, you know, if the neighbors around this address, you know, I think that that's very important. Mine is a little bit more about, we find ourselves, I know that we don't want spot zoning, but I hope that as we go through with the rewrite, with zoning rewrites, that we find ways to handle unique situations. And this one definitely is. You know, I'm not jumping up and down saying I think that we should spot zone for this because I guess this is what this would be. But you're in a situation where a cemetery around or the funeral home is residential, which is a little funny. And I'm sure that that was grandfathered in, but you find yourself in a unique situation. So hopefully, Decatur can come up with a process so that something like this could be resolved in the future, and it's not just black or white, yes or no, based on stuff that we had to inherit, and we don't have any recourse for that. Thank you.
And you and I did talk, I think we've had that situation come up with, I think, package stores where residents were okay, but they weren't okay with what else could be in the zoning, and I don't like that either, and I hope we can, I think we've talked about addressing that going forward, so thank you. And then, I don't have, you signed in, but I think if y'all would like to come...
I don't know if they wanted to speak or not, I just know if they were here in opposition,
You're welcome to speak, Ms. Smith or Mr. Smith, if you choose to, but I just was, I knew that you guys needed to get out of here. So I asked for them to move forward.
Gentlemen, this is the second time that Mrs. Pertle has gone to the zoning commission to try to change her property from residential to commercial. And the zoning commission's job is to keep a community conform so that you can't just build anything anywhere you want to. They have a rule that this business, a storefront, would not fit well into our residential neighborhood as this would be spot zoning. We appreciate their unanimous no vote on this. There is zone commercial all up and down Molton Street. Eighth Street and Danville Road corners have been zoned commercial, and there is commercial at Danville Road in Caradale. There's plenty of space already zoned commercial that Ms. Pertle can put a floral shop, not right in the middle of our residential area. Why would you place a storefront right in front of somebody's house? Ms. Pertle has stated, not today, but has stated that there are churches, funeral homes, and a school along the section of Danville Road close to her property, and she didn't see why she couldn't build a floral shop there. The people who own the property around Ms. Pertle's property brought their property knowing that surrounding them were churches, funeral homes, and a school, and we were all fine with this. This is what communities are made of, and Ms. Pertle can say that she wants to build a floral shop on her property if you choose to rezone it. But tomorrow, next week, or next year, she can sell that property and the owner can put something else there, something like a used car lot, something like rental storage units, or even a convenience store. Gentlemen, you brought botched houses knowing what was in your neighborhood. And I ask you, how would you like to see a storefront business in your front door staring you in the face every day? Something you never wanted and something that you never expected when you bought your property. A storefront on this property is not residential friendly, and I ask that you please vote no to this request and keep the integrity of our neighborhood. I would also like to point out, if anyone needs floral arrangements for their cemetery lots, that they can be purchased at the Rose Lawn Cemetery Office. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, do you mind just giving your full name and address so I can get it on the record?
I'm sorry.
Your full name and address.
Oh, I'm Betty Smith, seven forty Danville Road.
And you're directly across the street from this, correct? You're directly across the street?
Directly across the street.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, seeing no one else here to speak, we'll consider the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Pike.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion?
Yes, I'll say that this is, as Ms. Smith stated, this is not the first time we've been at this juncture. We were here, I want to say in two thousand eight. And in two thousand eight, the planning commission, as they did in this particular case, voted unanimously in opposition to this. The council voted unanimously in opposition to this. I have spoken with everyone. I've gotten calls from a lot of people, and I've actually visited with everyone whose property is adjacent, who owns property that is adjacent and lives there, adjacent to this. And immediately across the street, and no one is in favor of this. Now, the Smiths were the only ones who came tonight. Others said that they were going to come, but no one's in favor of this. I've even gotten calls from people over one block over from Brittwood. And so they're not in favor of it. Nobody in this community is in favor of it, and their fear is very simple. As Ms. Smith stated more eloquently than I can, that today it might be a floral shop and tomorrow it might be something else. And that's their fear, and I think that's a legitimate fear. And these people have bought their homes with the anticipation that the neighborhood would remain as it was when they bought there. So I just, I will oppose this tonight, and we'll just, we can go from there.
Thanks, Mr. Jackson. Any other discussion? All right, roll call?
Winder.
No.
McMasters.
No.
Jackson.
No.
I.
No.
Pepper.
No.
All right, ordinance twenty-two, four, five, four, zero fails with a vote of zero to five. All right, we will go ahead and go back to the set public hearing section. Thank you, guys. All right, setting public hearings, resolution twenty-two, three, forty-three. Approve abatement of unsafe conditions at three zero three, Eleventh Avenue Northwest. Set public hearing to be held on January third, twenty twenty-three, at six P M.
Here, if you have questions.
Got any questions on that for David? And the second one, resolution twenty-two, three, four, four. Approve abatement of unsafe conditions at twenty-two fifty-nine Graham Avenue Southwest. Set public hearing to be held on January third, twenty twenty-three, at six P M. Any questions? All right, ordinance twenty-two, four, five, four, five. Approve rezoning request fourteen, ten, twenty-two for property located at thirty-three oh seven Indian Hills Road Southeast from an R one, single-family residential district, to a B two, general business district. Set public hearing to be held on January third, twenty twenty-two, at six P M.
Yes, this is the property immediately behind the public development there at the corner of Indian Hills Road and Highway sixty-seven. It's kind of a remnant from that last round of rezoning that wasn't rezoned. They're seeking to go B two, like the rest of the property.
All right, any questions? Thanks, Lee. All right, public hearings, item A, ordinance twenty-two, four, five, three, nine. Approve zoning request fourteen oh nine, twenty-two for property located at twenty-three nineteen Old Molton Road Southwest to be zoned M one A, Commercial Expressway District. Public hearing was set November seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Yes, this is the recently annexed tract. Previously, the Littoral family owned this for years. They sold it to a development company, annexed it into the city, and this is seeking to give it the M one A zoning designation, which is our Beltline Commercial Corridor zoning. It was recommended for approval by the planning commission. There was one email that was received on this after the planning commission that I just felt prudent to bring forward. Just when we receive them, we like to pass them along. They were not able to attend the planning commission. That's why it came to us after. The main concern expressed in the email is traffic on Old Molton Road by what development may come in.
All right, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing now. If there's anyone here to speak on this item, they can speak now. All right, seeing no one here to speak, we'll consider the public hearing closed.
Still move.
Still move.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Winder.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
I.
I.
Pepper.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two, four, five, three, nine is approved, five to zero. All right, wee debatments are next. David, anything out of the ordinary?
No, sir, no changes. I hope this gets these taken care of for a few days anyway.
All right, we're going to take these all together.
Still move.
Still move.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Winder.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
No.
I.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
The wee debatments are approved with a vote of four to one.
Thank you.
All right, resolutions. Resolution twenty-two, three, fifty. Approve an amendment to the existing power supply contract between T V A and the City of Decatur to implement a new resale rate schedule for electric vehicle charging power rates.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution requesting modification of the power contract. It will add an E V charging rate to be made available to D U customers who install chargers with a minimum demand of fifty K W and no larger than five thousand K W. This is normally a commercial entity charger.
Got a motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike.
Sorry if I cut him off.
You're good. Any discussion? Roll call.
Winder.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
I.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two, three, fifty is approved, five to zero. Resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-one, approve an amendment to the existing power contract between T V A and the City of Decatur to provide an exception for Decatur Utilities to sell electricity used exclusively for electrical vehicle charging.
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
I'll second, but if he has anything to add.
Second by Mr. Pike. Glenn?
I'll be glad to answer. Any questions if you have them?
Any questions on that one? T V A's already approved both of these.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Winder.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
I.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-one is approved, five to zero. Resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-two, approve one-time pay increase for wellness participants.
Rochelle Stanley, Human Resources. This is the annual resolution to authorize payout for a hundred dollars to those who participated in the wellness initiative.
All right.
Still move.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Winder.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
I.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-two is approved, five to zero. Next is resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-three, approve one-time holiday pay increase.
The annual resolution to authorize payout. If you have questions, let me know.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call.
Winder.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
I.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-three is approved, five to zero. Next we have resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-four, approve sidewalk cafe for Tess's Place.
Yes, this is Tess's Place, a business on Second Avenue downtown. This is to approve them to use the public sidewalk for a sidewalk cafe like we've done for a couple of other businesses along Second Avenue and Bank Street. All the internal departments have reviewed this and given their approvals, and the planning commission has approved it as well.
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Pike.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion?
Lee, we don't have any kind of thing, any kind of situation where this might be dangerous in any kind of way, do we?
With the guidelines that we have on them, we believe we addressed any safety issues. Some of the points that we look at is they have to maintain, I believe it's sixty inches of free sidewalk clearance beyond their extent of their sidewalk cafe so that they're not impeding flow on the sidewalk itself. They have to have, I believe, sixty inches as well leading up to their entrance to allow for clear ingress and egress to their property. They are roped off with stanchions so that they are clearly designated areas. They do not extend beyond the walls of their business. With everything, with all the things we've had in place, we believe that it's working well as it's written now. I'm not aware or haven't been made aware of any complaints about any of our existing businesses that have these downtown.
Okay, so we've not had any problem with the existing businesses with regard to safety or anything?
Not that I've been made aware of, no, sir. And we do, we do require annual reapplication, and we perform inspections yearly on these to make sure they're still conforming to what was approved.
Okay. These are just the two picnic tables that have been there with the stanchion now around it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
Winder.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
I.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-four is approved, five to zero. Next is resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-five. Authorize the mayor to sign the Carrier Commercial Service H VAC Maintenance Plan Agreement and Addendum.
Yeah, the mayor and council, I'm Charles Booth, purchasing agent for the city. This H VAC repair is one of our standing bids that required a rebid. We chose to opt to go with a national cooperative source well with the Carrier Group and try them out for at least twelve months and see if it's beneficial.
Still move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Winder.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
I.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-five is approved, five to zero. Next is resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-six, accept Saputo Dairy Foods donation for Cashin Wheeler Field.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Alan Stover with the Community Development Department. Saputo is graciously making a donation to the city to do some improvements at Cashin Wheeler Field. So we just ask that y'all accept this donation.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion?
I'd just say it's greatly appreciated. Thank you. And pass it on, please. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Winder.
Aye.
Masters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
I.
Pepper.
Aye.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Alan. Resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-six, approve, five to zero. Next is resolution twenty-two, three, fifty-seven. Approve City View software purchase for the community development building and revenue departments.
Brad Phillips, Director of Information Systems. Yes, this is a resolution to approve agreement with City View for software. Those departments mentioned. I'm here for any questions.
All right, we do have one member of the public that signed up to speak on this item. Andrea, if you want to come to the podium.
Happy to stay in Nicholas today, everybody. I hope you've all been good.
We have.
Good, good. So, okay, before I, before the clock starts, I have to tell you, I am not an I T expert. So this might take me four minutes.
We only get three.
Okay, so, all right. So, so, so wait, don't start it yet. Don't... Here we go. So first of all, I want to thank you for hearing me tonight. And first, I'd like to thank Melissa for her timely response to my questions about this important decision. I'm representing citizens who are concerned that so few vendors were considered in an industry with plentiful proven solutions. So Melissa explained to me why Tyler and Harris were considered, and Brad just let me know about a third. I believe it's Civic Gov. So Melissa explained that there were no other vendors considered because one main priority was that the software be compatible with existing software. She explained, these vendors that were considered make software that the city is already using. So again, I'm not an I T expert, but I do know that a lot of these software companies know that, and they lock you in with this tactic. Competitors will have a program they've written to be able to pull in and import data into the new system to minimize downtime and work with other providers. Melissa also explained that the city wanted software that would work with other existing software packages such as Laserfish and the G I S system, which is Esri. However, other platforms have integrations with Laserfish, and most city software programs should be compatible with Esri because it's a very common G I S. Lastly, Melissa explained the City View software had many features the team wanted for doing business with citizens, making online applications and payments. But other platforms also provide robust options for that. So again, I'm not an I T expert, but I've looked on Capterra, the software review site, and I only found reviews for the Harris City View Parking Management Systems. It has six reviews, and it has an average of three point eight stars. I won't go into the details because of limited time. So let's explore some of the competitors. So Civic Plus is a platform which I can't find reviews, but I've spoken with the city manager of Scottsdale. That is Sustainable Tourism and Durango, and they're both very pleased with it. Civic Gov has nine reviews on Capterra with four point eight stars. Smart Gov has sixteen reviews with four point five stars average. GovPilot boasts seventy-four reviews with a four point six star average. It's a platform with over a hundred twenty-five modules to handle almost any process. They're an American company, which the one we're choosing is Canadian, by the way, that is ubiquitously praised for affordability and could replace all our current system components, probably saving money for the city. GovPilot does have integrations for Laserfish and Esri. They don't charge a setup fee and allow unlimited users, so no license fees proceed. GovPilot is integrated with Esplinsoft, Applinsoft, which my I T geek colleagues say is superior to Bluebeam, but they can be with Bluebeam, whatever. What I've also been told is that they are the fastest deployment in the industry. They actually write it in their agreement, forty-five to sixty days for deployment. Even if we go with City View, we need to make sure that they provide a detailed schedule. Then if they breach that, the city has grounds to back out and recover funds. Bottom line, this is an immensely important decision. I believe it's worth pressing the pause button to consider other options that... I believe it's worth pressing the pause button to consider other options that might be faster, more powerful, more flexible, more user-friendly, and perhaps even cheaper.
Thank you, Andrea. You did hit the three minute, but I'll let you finish.
Oh, you know, you gave me a Yuletide gift of extra seconds, so thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, motion by Mr. Pike.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Brad, do you want to just kind of tell us why City View you feel like is the best option?
Well, as I, I did talk to Ms. Wilson earlier and said, this is not solely my decision. This is based on the decision of all the departments that were involved when we went to select these, and there were a couple others that I don't think you got that email that Tom can tell us more about. And as far as like reviews, there are other cities using City View, and that's what Tom has informed me, he's talked to some of these, he's acted closely, so they are not unknown, and they are not, I think I'll let you speak to that part of it. And yes, Harris owns the software we use now for the building department, which is Blueprints. They acquired that company, and we've had no problems with them, and they've been talking about this for a while, as far as trying to get us upgraded to this newest version of what this other software sees. And I think everybody I speak for was happy with what we saw from City View as far as meeting what we think the council and mayor want as far as making the city more business-friendly for our citizens, be able to do more online things such as payments, applications, et cetera. And if you would like to know more about some of the other companies, I'll let Tom talk about that.
Any other questions or discussion from the council? Thanks, Brad. We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just, I want to say one thing, you know, we've been using the online, what we've used now, and it's just antiquated.
Yeah.
It's very, very antiquated, so I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, from somebody who's in the permit portal a lot, to see what, you know, what this new software can do.
All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Whitehead.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two, three fifty-seven is approved five to zero. Next is resolution twenty-two, three thirty-nine, authorization to use the city parking lot behind Princess Theater located at one twelve Second Avenue Northeast for an electric vehicle fast charging station.
Yeah, good evening, Council, Dane Shaw, Director of Development. So we found the space behind the princess is actually by the mechanical shed that's in the lot that the city owns. The Cook's Museum has said that was the best spot for them as well, so this is the space we look for, looking at.
Motion by Mr. Pike, second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call.
Whitehead.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pepper.
Resolution twenty-two, three thirty-nine, approve five to zero. Next is resolution twenty-two, three fifty-eight, approve FY twenty-three resurfacing projects.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Kyle Demester Finance. This is some housekeeping related to our resurfacing projects. During the original budget time, we get a list from engineering of potential projects that were scheduled for the upcoming year. We fit as many as we possibly can into the budget, and then we wait towards this time of year every year to kind of get a better grasp of where we stand with our gas tax funds, which are solely spent, are solely fun resurfacing projects. So what this, what we're essentially doing tonight is fitting the rest of the projects on the list into the various spots that you see on the resolution.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Whitehead.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pepper.
Resolution twenty-two, three fifty-eight is approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-two, three fifty-nine, accept ascend donation to Police Department for Heroes and Helpers Program.
Mayor, Council, Todd Benyon, Decatur Police Chief. This is a sub to a five thousand dollar donation for our heroes and helpers, our Shop With a Cop, which is why we're typically known as, donation they give into us to help with that issue that's coming up on the sixteenth.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Whitehead.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pepper.
Resolution twenty-two, three fifty-nine is approved five to zero. Next is ordinance twenty-two, four five four four A, adopt medical cannabis ordinance.
Of course, we've discussed this on Herman Mark, City Attorney for Decatur. We've discussed this particular ordinance several times in the last few weeks, but what it provides for is dispensing sites. This is going to be highly regulated by the Alabama Commission that's been given that authority, and this will allow, if it's approved, will allow individual companies to apply with the commission, but they must show that they have approval of an ordinance by the particular city, and that's what this will do if you choose to do so. It will allow them to then apply with the commission. There's only going to be a total of thirty-seven dispensing sites across the state. And that's, there may be some questions, but that's probably adequate. We discussed it, as I said, several times over the last few weeks.
Motion by Mr. McMasters. Second by Mr. Pike. We have two members of the public who have signed up to speak. Either order y'all want to go.
I'll go first.
All right.
So this I should be able to do in three minutes because I'm not smoking weed, so...
That's a great point.
Well, Andrew Alfmer Wilson, I live at thirteen oh six Caradell Street, and so now we can start the clock. First, I'd like to thank my District Four Councilman Hunter Pepper for researching this topic before the vote tonight. Decatur is lagging behind. As of today, thirty-five cities and five counties have passed a medical marijuana ordinance in Alabama. Montgomery was the first city to adopt an ordinance last year. Mayor Stephen Reed explained, "We wanted to make sure that Montgomery positions itself for the growth in this area." Our state already passed the law to legalize medical marijuana in 2021, so no amount of pearl clutching will change that. In fact, in the face of interstate drug cartels getting busted in Decatur, supporting state-controlled medical marijuana makes sense. The DW Hall Compassion Act specifically states, "It is the intent of the legislature to create within Alabama a wholly interstate system for the cultivation, processing, and distribution of medical cannabis in the interest of protecting its own residents from the danger that recreational cannabis poses." The argument that this is a gateway to weed culture is ludicrous. Medical marijuana has nothing to do with roach clips and bombs. Prohibited forms are raw plant material, i.e. bags of weed, products smoked or vaped, and products like cookies and candies. Medical marijuana will be available in tablets, tinctures, capsules, et cetera. This is not promoting recreational weed culture. This is about a suffering human being finding relief under the care of a physician. I personally experienced debilitating neuropathic pain caused by a rare mitochondrial disease. Pharmaceutical solutions have not resolved this pain. I challenge those who sit on the dais tonight and are considering a no vote to walk barefoot across an electrified metal crate, or wear gloves lined with shards of broken glass, or sleep in a bed of electrified wires. That's what it feels like. I refuse to allow my disease to define me, and I will seek out medical marijuana, so will others in Decatur. The question tonight is whether City Council will force us to drive to another city. Now, I avoid driving as do others with conditions treated by medical marijuana. I have a spouse who will drive me, but what about those who are not so fortunate? I encourage you to vote yes to medical marijuana access in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Weren't you going to bring me some pearls to...
I, you can't use my pearls to clutch your pearls.
Rob is the last person signed up.
Rob Wilson, Caradell Street. I think voting down access to this is only going to put Decatur at a disadvantage. Huntsville obviously will, yes, Decatur residents can go somewhere, but why would they have to? Medical marijuana, as our city attorney Herman said, is going to be highly regulated. Legislature in Montgomery passed the DW Hall Compassion Act specifically for this reason. This is about providing Decatur citizens access to a clinically proven solution to several debilitating health issues in a highly regulated and growing industry. This is, I know this is not about clinical evidence, but it's, it's, it's a thing. It's not even in question anymore. It provides relief when other treatments fail. It's overwhelming. My wife did share her experience that we go through daily with pain. Medical marijuana has been clinically proven to diminish neuropathic pain. Yes, we're fortunate. If we have to go to Huntsville, I can drive my wife to get access to prescribed medical marijuana when it's available. But what about those who can't drive? And there are a lot, cancer patients, older people. There's just no reason that they should have to. Anyway, and beyond that, you know, I grew up in Decatur. This is not a political issue. It's not a religious issue. It's, it's, it is not, we joke about it, but it's not time to be pearl clutching. It's not a local option that we all went through, those of us who are here, nor is it like the ongoing conversation about gambling. This is about filling medical prescriptions prescribed by trained and well-studied physicians. It may take a while in Decatur for a lot of the doctors to get read up anyway. The point is that we are there when we can, that we have access to this. I hope, gentlemen, that we all just use common sense and unanimously pass this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rob. We've got a motion and a second. I did not have anyone else signed up to speak, so any discussion?
I've been, the folks that have reached out to me, I've been surprised. They have been overwhelmingly in support of this, and after researching it with the, with the clinical stuff and the medical research that supports it, I'm going to, I'm going to support this tonight.
Any other discussion?
I'll support this tonight as well. I guess my biggest concern is that, we've talked about a medical solution, we've talked about this being a prescribed drug, and those are the things that make it where it's not difficult to support this. Very easy for me to support this. I have concerns that we have narrowed the playing field so small, though, with the five hundred, with five hundred and forty parcels or five hundred and forty-one parcels, and I looked at the map. We've narrowed the playing field so small that it's going to be difficult to find a place to provide that opportunity for people here who need it. You know, we've got, on many of our council agendas, we have alcohol licenses, and we have alcohol on basically, I'm not going to say every corner, but on many of the corners and thoroughfares in our city. It only takes a person to be twenty-one and be able to show that to go and buy cigarettes. And all of these things are harmful to us. This is something that, even if you're twenty-one, if you don't have a prescription, you can't get it. And so I don't see the risk that many people want to associate with this. I just don't see that. So I'll support this tonight. I hope that it provides the relief for people in our community who need that. My only concern is that, you know, I wish we had better locations for the people to be able to get them, and that's a concern for me, but I'll support this tonight as it is being presented.
All right, you there?
Go ahead, Mr. Pepper.
All right, just to add to what Mr. Jackson and what Mr. McMasters said, excuse me. There we go. Just to add to what they said, they, when they hit on, Mr. Jackson hit on something where he said that, you know, you can find alcohol on many of the street corners in the city of Decatur, but just to add to that, I'm going to support this tonight because if we're going to, if we're going to pretty much say that, I guess you could say marijuana is going to increase this, or increase crime, or increase different, there's all sorts of different things that I've received comments and statements and messages about over the past few days when it comes to what marijuana is going to increase in our community. I'm going to bet that statistics show that there's been a lot more related issues with alcohol over the past many years, as well as cigarettes than there has marijuana. There's a statistical, there's studies that have been done throughout years to prove that, including one done by Harvard that was actually very recent, that they had put out two years ago showing where, after the state of Colorado legalized marijuana recreationally, they did a study, I don't know how many years ago it's been since they legalized it recreationally. There we go. But just to, just to really, like I said, just to hit on that area, I think that if anybody is going to make the argument that it's going to make our community more dangerous or anything like that, I mean, that we can't really argue that it's going to cause more deaths, because as I've, as I've said, you know, statistically proven alcohol has caused ten times more deaths than, in my opinion, marijuana ever will. Not only that, I think this is going to benefit those that are in need with chronic pain and that, and not only that, there's a lot of pros and cons to medical marijuana. There's also a lot of pros and cons to opioids. There's also a lot of pros and cons to non, you know, non, non, I guess you could say, more over the counter, excuse me, that's what I'm looking for, over the counter medications. Well, what a lot of people do not know is the opioids, the amount of side effects that come with opioids and the dangers that come with them, not just from using them for chronic pain, but the amount of medical problems that it creates after long-term use. Opioids and high-grade painkillers also can cause all sorts of, all sorts of issues with the body, the body internally, and as well as, I guess you could say externally as well. But that's pretty much my argument to it. I think that medical marijuana is going to be a great thing for our community, and I hope that we can get it passed tonight.
All right, thanks, Mr. Pepper.
I will say I will be in support of this ordinance tonight. Do impart to some of the research that I've done, I do believe there's medical benefits. I've experienced this with other people, and I know that there are people that have successfully used recreational marijuana and similar products. Another reason, Mr. Wilson, that you brought up, we do know that this is going to be in our area, there are going to be people in Decatur, whether this passes or fails, it will be here, and so if we're going to provide it for medical use, I think we should be able to provide it within the city limits, so we'll be supporting this tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Pike. I guess I'll get my few minutes to lose, lose the argument, but I did want to thank Joey Robertson. He came a few weeks ago and presented this item to us. I don't think that I've supported it from the beginning, although I tried to have an open mind in researching and discussing this, but I felt like it was, had to be put on the agenda for us to decide on either way. So I do appreciate, I disagree, you know, we've had some conversation, but I do appreciate you coming, and you've been at every meeting since then to answer questions and provided contacts for us at the state level, so thank you for that. A lot of people called interested in coming here to make some money, but you're the only one that really went above and beyond that, so I did want to thank you publicly for that. I'm just going to state the reasons why I won't support this. I definitely respect everyone's opinion, certainly hearing of people with chronic pain that you can't find an answer to, I don't, I can't say anything to that. I appreciate that, I've heard that from several people, we heard it tonight, and I hope you can find relief, whether it's through this avenue or others, so don't think this is in any way saying I don't care about that, because obviously I do. I mentioned this before, the legal aspect of this I just generally have a problem with. Marijuana is a federally banned substance. You cannot federally, it's against the law to grow it, to sell it, it's against the law. In two thousand thirteen, two Obama administration memos were written, as far as I can tell, this is the whole basis for how this was allowed state, within states that approved it, basically saying that the Department of Justice should just not enforce the federal ban, which that in itself is interesting from a Department of Justice. But that's where this came from, to allow for medical marijuana in states. Actually, in two thousand eighteen, the Trump administration, Department of Justice sort of reversed that in a memo. Actually, in 2018, the Trump administration, Department of Justice sort of reversed that in a memo, but there's never been any actual overturn of the federal ban. I just have a general issue with that. And the Constitution says that supremacy is given to federal law over state law, and I have an issue with that. Attorney General Steve Marshall wrote a very good, I thought, well-researched piece. He has led the fight against opioid abuse and over-prescriptions and has been involved in that for a long time. Wrote a four-page letter to the legislature asking them to not pass this in their session last year. Very well documented, I think there's five or six pages of footnotes, some very good points. He's the chief law enforcement officer of the state, and he did not think this should be approved. There's some very good reasons. A lot of it has to do with his experience in battling the opioid industry over several years and how he doesn't think we still have control over that, and now we're adding something else to the mix. And then local law enforcement challenges. We have fentanyl issues, we have other issues that are in Alabama, in the southeast, in this country. And this will be a challenge for our local officials in how to know, you know, it's just throwing another drug into the mix that people will be impaired with, whether they get a prescription for it or not, a lot like other prescriptions. It also does not pair very well with opioids. From all the research, people who are on opioids and they also use marijuana, there's deadly effects to that. And we know we have an opioid crisis of addiction, and this is, again, throwing that on top. Medical, I asked, Mr. Pepper and I had a little bit of a back and forth in the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago. I asked, you know, hey, talk to your medical professionals. I've talked to as many as I could knew and could talk to, and we talked. A lot of differing opinions. I would say very few had strong opinions either way. There were a few that were a hundred percent in favor, and there were definitely some that were a hundred percent opposed. Most, I would say, were a little bit indifferent. They didn't think there necessarily been enough research done yet. They obviously have experience with opioids, but were generally indifferent. Two quotes that kind of stuck with me. I had one local doctor tell me that the chronic, he felt like in his research, the chronic pain relief research was dubious at best. He did see some value in some other, for some other conditions that the state is allowing it for. And he actually said, "This is just an experiment on the American people, and we will find out in ten years or twenty years what the real impact of this will be down the road when we see the long-term effects of medical marijuana." There's, one of the problems is, there's not a lot of longevity in the research. And one, you can point to the opioid epidemic that we have is, and I had a doctor tell me this kind of anecdotal story. He said, "Five years ago, for certain surgeries, they would, he would have prescribed twenty-five whatevers, right? Pain relievers, whatever that pain reliever would be, to someone for a specific surgery. Now, knowing what they found out over the past five or ten years, he would prescribe five." He didn't know how addictive it was. He didn't, we lived through that, and people lost their lives and their livelihoods over becoming addicted to these opioids. So that's a real-life example of a doctor that went, he did research, but it was in prescribing stuff to real people, and it had a negative impact on their life. One thing I wanna read, and I'm sorry I'm blubbiating, you can appreciate it. But it's an important issue. And you will appreciate this. This was in one of the footnotes for, from Steve Marshall's letter he wrote to the legislature. This is Bertha Madras, professor of psychobiology at Harvard Medical School. I thought you would like that. A member of the President's Commission on Combating Drug Addiction and the Opioid Crisis. Real quick, I'll just read what she said. "The recent National Academics of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine reports summarize that what over fifteen meta-analyses have already concluded. The vast majority," this is 2020, by the way. "The vast majority of the medical indications for marijuana embedded in state regulations have no rigorous scientific basis whatsoever. And for the few randomized controlled trials that have been conducted for chronic neuropathic pain, none have been extended beyond a few weeks, and the majority of subjects were experienced marijuana users. In many ways, the recent history of the marijuana movement is recapitulating the history of the opioid movement that has led our national, our current national crisis. When you look at the root causes of the current opioid crisis, there are many. One of the first contributors was poor science. There were no long-term outcomes on the use of opioids for chronic pain, none. Nothing published that went beyond a few months. We had nothing published on safety and efficacy after years and years of opioid administration. We have precisely the same problem with marijuana with regards to long-term use for pain management. We have nothing in terms of randomized controlled trials conducted for long periods and a safety efficacy profile to include quality of life measures after extended use of the various concoctions designated as medical marijuana. So at this point, it is very difficult to endorse a psychoactive addictive plant extract as an alternative without good evidence. We should not get on the same path that we did with opioids, which was to accept poor quality science claiming that they were safe for the long term and non-addictive for pain patients. Think of the many factors that fueled the opioid crisis and the compelling parallels of marijuana. During the development of the opioid movement, vast sums of money were spent to promote their unsubstantiated use for many pain conditions. Side-by-side comparisons with safer drugs were not performed. Those is not evidence-based, and they were promoted as safe and not addictive without solid evidence for safety and efficacy for chronic medical conditions. Opioid advocates received attention, but prudent opponents were ignored or vilified as drug warriors. Addiction, diversion, and other adverse consequences were not anticipated or even ignored. Illicit opioid analogues flooded the nation. Medical education lagged far behind the crisis, and government regulations failed to protect the public. Quite similar to today's marijuana movement, we are at the same stage with marijuana, and we have to be cautious." All right, I'm almost done. The other people I talked to after doctors are people who work with addicts. All of them are opposed to medical marijuana. I don't know what the correct definition of a gateway drug is, but they all told me, these are people that deal with meth addicts, all kinds of different addicts, that all of their, oh, she said ninety, they say ninety-nine percent, because they don't wanna say a hundred, but almost all of them started with marijuana. Whether it's a gateway to these other things, I can't tell you that. But they all say that the first drug they did was marijuana. Okay, so what is this really about? No question, it's the first step to recreational. Everybody that has recreational marijuana started with medical marijuana. Growers, and again, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Robertson. Growers will gain power through this bill that was passed by the legislature, political power. And it is a good thing for growers for recreational to be approved, and it will be. It will be approved in the state of Alabama, and people who already have dispensaries will be the first people that have recreational marijuana in their city. I don't know many people that support having recreational, some do, but I don't know many. This is, this is, at the end of the day, it's all about money. And the reason I think this, I think there are some aspects from the medical perspective, but overwhelmingly, it's about money. And the reason I think this is because who called me to try to get me to support this? Very few people who have chronic pain called me, very few. No doctors called me. I called them. I got a lot of calls from growers and a lot of people who lobby for growers, like Alpha. That's who called me. It was nothing about medical. It was all about how they could, those groups could make more money. And then even from a municipal standpoint, the arguments you hear, they're about tax revenue. I mean, I see it all the time. It's, hey, we can grab this tax revenue. That is just a poor reason to approve something that could have really negative impacts, in my opinion. Promise I'm almost done. All right, what kind of community do we want? Again, this will lead to recreational use. I've been around the country. I was just talking with Rob. I was in Chattanooga a few weeks ago. I saw a medical dispensary, and I know it's not gonna be like this day one, but it will be. The medical dispensaries looked no different than vape shops. They certainly did not look like pharmacies. Your favorite type of lights were coming around the windows, and this was not any, I did not see anybody lined up with, I saw a lot of people go in. They didn't seem to have any medical issues. Their laws are a little different than ours there. But day one, there's regulations around that, and I understand that it can't look like that day one. But that's where we're headed if, as we approve these things. Most of my arguments, obviously, are against the state law. I don't think it should have been passed, but they gave us the authority locally to decide if we want it in our community or not. Again, I think it's what this could lead to. If this was just for, you know, cancer patients, from what I understand, across the country where medical marijuana is allowed are less than five percent of who get prescribed medical marijuana, is less than five percent are cancer patients. If there was a very limited, kind of, what you could get this for into life type scenarios, I probably would have been a little more apt to support it, but it's wide open, just like opioids have been, and it'll be up to doctors. Hopefully, we'll trust the doctors to make those decisions. Lastly, I'm a conservative, and one of the things that that means to me is not pearl clutching, but it means that when there's hundreds of years of a society kind of deciding one thing is wrong or right, they want it or they don't want it, that I need a really, really convincing argument to change that, right? And sometimes there are convincing arguments. And I certainly wanna try to be reasonable in research and discussion. But as a conservative, to change societal norms that have been around, there's gotta be a really, really convincing argument, and I just frankly haven't seen that at all through this process. So again, respectfully disagree with my colleagues here, but this is just kind of the conclusion that I've come to. It was probably the conclusion that I started with. Again, tried to be open-minded throughout the process, but that's where I've landed. So sorry for the sermon, but that's where we are. All right, any other discussion? Is there anything left to say? Roll call. No.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
All right, ordinance twenty-two, four-five, four-four A is approved with a vote of four to one. Moving into boards and committees, reappoint Delane Dean to the Board of Zoning Adjustment Term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Motion by Mr. McMaster, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
I will stand.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
All right, reapportion of Delane Dean is approved with a vote of four to zero and one abstention. Next is appoint Mark McCurry to the Board of Zoning Adjustment Term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-three. Motion by Mr. McMaster, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
McMaster.
Aye.
Jackson.
I will stand.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
All right, Mark McCurry is appointed to the Board of Zoning Adjustment with a vote of four to zero, one abstention. All right, our next council work session will be held on December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two at five P.M. Next regular council meeting will be held on December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two at ten A.M. Anything else from directors?
I want to welcome Alejandra Ariaga. She's a new hire for Engineering Department. She is back in the bag and waved Alejandra, and she'd be helping Carl and coordinate all the roads and projects that we have, so.
Good, welcome, Tom Pike.
Hey, let me say something. I was not gonna say anything, but for the last few years, at Christmas time and Thanksgiving, John Andrieski and I, his family and my family and a church that we deal with have had the opportunity to give turkeys and Thanksgiving and Christmas dinners to needy families. And, you know, this time, we were over in the area by the Beach Street Boys and Girls Club. And I just, I mean, some of those apartments that we went to, Dane, it's almost criminal how those things are. And I think that we've got to do a better job of making sure that we enforce the codes that people are living under. And it's just, it was, it almost brought tears to my eyes to have to see what people have to endure. And simply because a landlord is looking at the fact that they're just trying to get the dollar. And it's up to us to enforce those codes and make sure that the codes throughout our city are enforced, and we don't let our landlords get away with that. And again, I was just gonna talk to you on the side, but I think that this is a situation where all of our citizens are, well, all of our citizens need to be a part of this, and all of our departments need to be a part of this. And many of our residents are subjected to these things, and they don't have a choice. And I understand that if we do enforce some of these things, some of those people are gonna have to find a different place to live. But I think that once we come down on these people, they'll do a better job. And, you know, we got that off of Eighth Street, and we've got that near the Beach Street Boys and Girls Club. And it's just, it's not a good situation for many of our citizens. And I just ask that we address that most strenuously.
Thanks, Mr. Jackson. Anything else from directors? Anything else from council? All right, we're adjourned. Thanks.